The first order of business is to approve the minutes of the joint meeting that was held between the Sturbridge Planning Board and the Tree Warden on Tuesday, June 12th. Do we have any comments or questions or changes?
I had one. If I can find it now. I had one comment that I made in the minutes. Here it is. And it wasn't included. I asked the Tree Warden if the trees that were being removed would be replaced in kind, the type of tree, not the size, and possibly minus the white ash that we know is compromised anyway. I just would like to have that in the minutes if possible.
Okay, very good.
That's all I had.
Any other comments or changes? I think has it been changed to June 12th? I think it said June 13th at the top.
Yes.
Okay, with that, I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? And two abstaining for not being there. Great, okay. The next item on the agenda is the reorganization of the board. We'll be voting for a chairperson, a vice-chair clerk, a CMRPC representative, and an alternate CMRPC representative. So with that, I'll take nominations for chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Charles Blanchard.
Second.
Okay, that's second, okay. Do we have any other nominations?
What was the nomination?
For me, for Charles Blanchard. Okay, any others? I'll move then that nominations be closed. Second, okay. All in favor of the nomination? Nobody? Great, okay. Now we'll tag nominations for vice-chair clerk.
I'll nominate Sue Waters. She's done such a good job so far.
Great. I'll second that.
Second?
Russell? Okay, great. Any other nominations? Okay, move that nominations be closed. All in favor of the nomination of Sue Waters as vice-chair clerk? Very good. All in favor, good. Okay, the next is a CMRPC representative who is currently...
I think it was Sandra.
Oh, okay.
I think it was too.
Okay. Who was the alternate?
Sandra.
Penny?
No, just kidding.
Okay, so this is something everyone always wants to be. So who wants to be the CMRPC?
No passing of it.
I think Penny was the alternate, I want to say.
Yeah. Frank, do you know what that is? I mean, it's actually our representative to the Central Mass Regional Planning.
Gene didn't mention it. I would be interested in an alternate position, I think from a time commitment. I'm not quite sure about being the representative at this point in time, but...
I think it's quarterly.
Yeah, they have quarterly meetings. And it's good to attend because you get, you know, points toward your assistance grants by having attendance there, so it's good if we can do that. Okay, well, we can start with a nomination then for an alternate, since Mike would like to be the alternate.
I nominate Mike for the alternate.
Second?
Second.
Jim? All in favor? Very good. So now we're back to just the CMRPC representative. It'll affect whether we're going to be able to do that right now, so we'll have to take that under advisement and see what we can do. Until then, I guess, the alternate will be called on to go unless we find somebody else before that. Great, very good. Okay, Rebecca, do we have any A and Rs?
We do not.
Okay. So the next thing we have on the agenda is the waiver of site plan for the Sturbridge Early Learning Center at 440 Main Street. The applicant has requested a waiver of site plan approval for the redevelopment of the existing site to accommodate the Sturbridge Early Learning Academy. Oh, great, welcome. Could you introduce yourselves, please?
I'm Jessica Pillsbury.
And I'm Patricia Shepherd.
Very good. Do you want to give us an overview of what you have planned, or?
Well, we're planning on opening a childcare center, and it's going to be for children, infants, right through school age. We're looking to get licenses for 78 children. And I myself have owned two childcare centers, sold one, still have one, and now opening this one. And Jessica has worked for me for the past seven years and is going to be the administrator there.
Very good, okay. And this site is where the Kiwi place was?
Yes.
Great. Okay. So we have a detailed report from Gene Bubon. If I can find it here. Okay, we have the application that was dated June 7th, a three-page narrative which is included here. There's a hand-drawn floor plan which consists of two pages. There's another plan entitled "The Proposed Educational Daycare Facility at 440 Main Street." We have memorandum from Lieutenant John Marinelli from the fire inspector, memorandum from Nelson Burlingame, and an email from the chief of police, Thomas Ford. So does anyone have any questions or comments about it?
Yeah.
Yeah, Russell?
Gene mentioned in her report about the police chief's memo, but there was no mention regarding Nelson's building commissioner's memo about the site plan showing the 75 square feet. Does this plan show that for child?
I'm not sure which one that you have, but we have one here.
Does he have a plan showing that?
Yep.
Is he satisfied?
Yes, he is.
Yes, and he met me out there last Monday, and we kind of did a walkthrough as well.
And then all the requirements from the fire department, any issues with that?
No.
No, they've actually been working with us to make sure we have everything.
So everything's in order with that?
Yes, and he'll have to do a final inspection before we can get our license through the state as well.
Did you, looking at the site plan, have you considered, I noticed you got entrance and exit at both ends of the property?
Mm-hmm.
And I know the curb cuts are there, but did you give it any consideration of having one as an entrance and the other as an exit, just for ease of flow-through in the parking lot?
You mean, so are you talking about parking, one pulling in and one exiting, not the doors of the building, the entrances to the driveway?
Both of them have exits and entrances?
Yep.
I didn't know if you had given it any consideration of having one as an entrance, drop off, and then out. You know what I mean? You're going to have conflicting cars going both ways, and if you get somebody coming in this way, you know, I'm afraid instead of them pulling into a parking lot, dropping a kid off, and then a car coming in this way, you know what I mean? I don't know what the rest of the board thinks about that. So that was a concern or a suggestion?
Yeah.
We did think about that.
Okay.
But we also noticed that, like, especially on the far end, it's a really, really wide area, so there would be sufficient room for two. But we were kind of thinking that we'd see what the traffic flow was like, and if we felt that that is a better plan, then we will definitely put that in.
Okay. And the other thing, these, I know you got room for 20 school-aged children.
Yes.
We don't have a bus with 20 seats on it. So I think I would suggest that you get in touch with Wendy McCroy, the bus supervisor.
Mm-hmm.
I drive a school bus for the town, so she didn't know anything about this. Nobody touched base with it until I told her about it, because we got the, you know, plans ahead of time, and she didn't know a thing about it.
Okay.
So you may want to touch base with her.
A lot of that, too, is for summer care, so 20 school-aged children in the summer would be what we would be licensed for in the classroom.
Right, but she would need to be kept up to speed as to how many you're going to have getting on and off a bus, you know what I mean? Because she needs to work out the particulars for that.
See, we don't know what our enrollment is going to be.
Right.
I mean, obviously, it'd be great to get 20 right away, but chances are, there's going to be two, maybe three, then it'll move up to four, so we'll definitely work with her.
I would say just keep in touch with her and keep her up to speed as to how many children you're going to have getting on and off the bus there.
Yep.
That's all.
Very good, thank you. Jim, do you have anything?
The recreation yard, as I understood it, it's supposed to be 75 square feet per child.
Correct.
Which would be 58, 50. And there's 5,300 feet there now, if I understand correctly.
Yes.
And part of that is gravel. Do you think gravel is good for a child's playground?
So they would have a lot of different activities that they would do on the gravel. Most of it would be woodchips with climbing structures and other materials for them to play with, and they wouldn't all be out in the playground at the same time. So at our current school now, there's a set schedule where one classroom goes out for an hour, they come in, the next classroom goes out for an hour. So they're sharing the space, and that schedule would be set up so they would, each classroom would have their own time outside, so it would really only be 20 children at a time outside in the morning, and then they'd get to go out again in the afternoon.
And with our licensing as well, toddlers are never allowed outside with older children, and even the school-aged children aren't allowed with the preschoolers.
Okay.
Except for like the last hour of the day.
And that's because numbers are so low.
Yeah.
So the licensing agency through the state is extremely strict as far as a lot of these questions, and we are very, and I understand that you guys are asking these things to really help us think about this, but, you know, we are really familiar with the state regulations as well.
Yeah. She'll come out and actually dig down through our woodchips and make sure we have the exact amount of inches that are sufficient, and so all of the materials that will be used will have to be inspected through our licenser.
Thank you. Heather?
How large is your facility? Because it seems like, I know what the requirement is for child interior-wise, but either that, I don't remember how large the building is, or it seems like it's smaller than, what is the actual?
It does look smaller than it really is. Every time someone walks in, they're like, "Oh my God, it's so big." It's 3,600 square feet.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
And that's six, according to the regulations, that's usable space, or is...
Yes.
That excludes bathrooms and all those things that are not included in the...
So I think I sent a, I did answer a memo. It's 35 square foot per child.
Yeah.
And I think that comes up to like 21 or some...
Yeah, I can't remember what the exact math was.
So there's actually extra room.
Okay.
For the amount of children that we're looking for, but we can't ask for more because your rankings are different.
Right. Gene provided that information to us, and there's a chart, I guess, that the state does their hierarchy in terms of how many of each you can have. Parking spaces, I know you're looking at drop-off and pickup primarily, but I think Russ's concern would eliminate anybody walking in front of a car, too. You know, because if you're pulling in going south and somebody's pulling in going north...
Right.
And you're going to let a child out on one side, and you're going to walk across that incoming traffic on the other lane, I think his point is well-taken in that respect, that you're going to have, you know, you're going to have people crossing traffic in your own driveway, so to speak. So you might want to consider by drop-off and pickup, you know, by just having people going one direction, you may eliminate some of the concerns, not only traffic-wise, but concerns of people getting in and out of their cars. But you have, how many staff will be there?
It depends on the time of the day, so the other thing I was going to mention, too, was that the parking lot will stagger throughout the day.
Right.
As like 7 o'clock, there'll only be a few children dropped off, then as the day goes on, just a few children every 15 minutes to half hour or so. They don't all drop off at once, and they don't all pick up at once, and our staff would be staggered in the same respect as enrollment. Our ratios increase, the staff would increase.
Okay.
At full capacity, we would have 10 teachers and then myself as the director, so there would be 11 staff members.
And you're going to have, your parking would be kind of separated from the...
Yeah.
To allow other people to park?
Well, we were kind of discussing how, I don't know if in the graph you can see our parking spaces, the side where the river is, we were actually saying we'd like to make that staff parking because we don't want children getting dropped off near the river, even though there's a lot of brush there, and we could put up, you know, like a two-rail fence or something, but we would like it much better to have staff be on that side and stay there and not have to move throughout the day, and the other children be dropped off on the playground side.
That makes sense. And what are your hours of operation going to be?
6:45 to 5:30.
And that's just, you're just only doing Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Take it, they're not doing weekends?
Yep.
Okay. Let me just take a look at my notes. I think you've answered everything I had so far. I know this is really unnecessary, it's really long overdue. We really need a center like this in town. The only other thing was is that you have the fire department, and they have that you're, I take it you're following their guidelines, and those, they'll do a final inspection, or have they already done that?
No, we're, actually, we have to have one in order to be licensed.
Right.
We were really fortunate, the building was equipped with full sprinkler systems. It had the emergency lights, it had the emergency escape doors. I mean, it's really like perfect. Even the spacing was perfect.
Oh, good.
I mean, it was like great when we just walked in and hit the bathrooms, and it was just...
It was meant to be.
Yeah. So we do have like our final inspection of the sprinkler system, that's all working, so all we're waiting for now is him to come through and do a final walkthrough and give us our inspection.
Okay.
But he did send us over, make sure you have all these things up to date.
We did get the inspection from the fire alarm system, from the...
Sprinkler.
Yeah, sprinkler system already.
Okay.
And I think all those other things in place, we did Chapter 34 review as well with Burton Engineering, and he outlined for us prior everything that we would need for, to get that education permit. And as far as fire, as far as square foot per children, how many people, I mean, he kind of did a really nice overview of it. So we knew full well going in all the work that we would need to do to make sure we passed all the inspections.
Good, okay. Thank you. Thanks for your, thanks for your time.
Yes.
Sue?
My questions have been answered.
Okay.
And it is a much-needed service to our town.
Great. Mike?
Yeah, I agree, most of my questions have been answered. I mean, when I first looked at it, the only thing was parking. I actually have two kids in daycare right now, so I'm very familiar. I also know, but based on the ratios that were provided, it looks like parking would be sufficient. I was, we're a little worried about the staff. That being said, I know from experience with two centers, parents tend to be quite vocal, and if there are complaints, I'm sure you guys would address it, so I feel comfortable with the plan as it is.
Yeah, we actually, we invite that. Her center prior that I started at only had four parking spaces, and it was bigger than this one.
Had 127 children.
Yeah, and it had four parking spaces, so there was a lot of...
Up the street.
Yeah.
Yep.
But they figured it out.
Yeah.
No further questions.
Frank?
I guess I'd just like to have you elaborate a little bit on the drop-off and pickup process. Will, do you anticipate parents parking and picking up the child coming in? Will somebody bring them out? Will somebody meet them in the morning? What's that process look like?
So the parents will drop the children off in their classroom, in their respective classroom with their teacher, because we like to have that interaction every day, and same for pickup. But like I said, from 6:45 till probably 9:30, they're arriving, so within that three hours, there's a large, there's probably only about five or six families dropping off at a time, and because there's so many siblings. So 78 children, we actually only serve, I think we did the math at our current school, 48 families.
48 families. That's an average, so it's only 48 cars coming in over a three-hour period.
So we do have a lot of families currently that have, you know, emailed and asked to enroll that have three children or two children, so even though it's 78 children, respectively, it's much smaller.
So you would anticipate them walking the children in?
Yeah.
So there's not going to be kids willy-nilly running around?
No, they'll be with their parents until they're with us, yes, and then our entire facility will be fenced in from one side to the other, so they won't...
So any door, they can't go out, they go into a fenced-in area.
Good, thank you.
Yes. We're thinking safety.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
One more thing.
Go ahead.
Just elaborate a little bit on what Frank said. When the bus drops off...
Yes.
And picks up, will it be an administration person with the children?
Yes.
Absolutely.
So someone will have to meet the bus, actually, at the bus door, and count the children, check them off, their name off of a list, and escort them into the building. So there'll be a staff that's designated to do that.
Thank you.
Right now, we have a separate staff for school-aged children, so they come in early and get the whole classroom set up, they are waiting for the children. And we have, I have three different buses that drop off, and so I have, I need a second staff member there as well for that, so.
Thank you. Very good, thank you.
I have one more thing, Charlie. It's more for your benefit than a question to you. On the east side where the Brook is, on rare occasion, we've had flooding there, haven't we? And so, I'm just bringing that up to make you aware of it. In my recollection, it's very, very seldom, but it can happen.
Yes.
They're fixing that next year.
Yeah, so we...
State's fixing that next year. They're replacing that whole culvert on the...
And before we purchased the building, we made sure that we did our research on beavers because that was the issue. So we've had a lot of beaver discussions, and there's someone that's been out there, I guess, making sure the water doesn't get too high, and so...
Yeah, and we were aware of that there was some flooding in the past, the previous owner did disclose that to us. But we also looked into the fact that they are fixing that culvert in the street and widening that out quite a bit to prevent any flooding on Route 20.
Right.
So we were really excited about that, because we actually did, I mean, this is a huge purchase for us. It was a big step and a lot of work, so we really did our homework before we went through everything, yeah.
Great, very good, thank you. Okay, and Gene's report, it also mentions that the rear play area required approval of the Conservation Commission. I guess the hearing or the meeting with them was on June 21st. Do we have any update on that or anything? No?
I do not have an update.
Okay, so we'll assume...
Okay, I'm like, they approved it if that...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So that's approved.
I mean, she still is emailing us the paperwork. She said it should be here this week, but...
Great, that's fine, thank you. And then also the comments from the police chief express some public safety concerns with the emergency management plan, and I guess you've already addressed that as well, so that's good. So therefore, Gene's recommendation is that the site plan can be waived in this instance because the proposed changes to the approved site plan will not substantially affect existing drainage, vehicular, and pedestrian circulation patterns, or any of the standards or criteria provided for in Chapter 25 Site Plan Approval, and as shown on the approved site plan. She is therefore recommending that the board waive the site plan approval as requested with the following conditions. The first would be that all state and local zoning bylaws, building codes, and other regulations must be adhered to. The second condition would be that all necessary permits and approvals must be obtained prior to the start of construction. If any required approvals are not obtained, and the plans must be modified, the applicant shall present revised plans to the board for review and approval. So is any other comments or any other thoughts on that?
Do we need two votes for that? One to waive the site plan and one to grant it?
I don't think so. I think it's just waiving the site plan once you're doing it.
Just a waiver of the site plan?
Yeah, that's what we...
With the two conditions?
Right, so I'll accept the motion then, waiving the site plan with the two conditions stated.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Very good. Congratulations, and good luck with the project.
Thank you so much.
Sounds like it'll be great.
Good luck.
We just have to get that one together.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Baba Sushi, 453 Main Street, to discuss the parking arrangements. Welcome, want to introduce yourself to the public?
Good evening. Mark Borenstein of Cedar and Chandler in Worcester. I'm an attorney for XM Corporation, DBA Baba Sushi Sturbridge and 453 Main Street LLC. I'm seeing some new faces, but as a lot of these members of this board recall, in March I appeared before this planning board to discuss the parking arrangements. I've spoken with Ms. Bubon, and we've evaluated the parking in the meantime. I think in your materials, you should have a letter from me. And essentially, throughout that period of time, we noticed that there were 21 cars at a maximum periods of time at the property. As we all expected during Brimfield, there was high traffic, and the property owner took it upon himself to contact the Southbridge Sheet Metal Company, Sheet Metal Works, to coordinate the use of their parking lot during those times for valet parking. I would stress, as I indicated in the letter, that that was the exception, and by and large, it was 21 cars at max, and most often, much less than that at the property. So I'm here, again, as requested by the planning board, to provide these findings, and as I indicated in the letter, request that the planning board make a determination that the parking on-site is sufficient for peak times during usual times at the property. In the, and as I indicated in the letter, the owner of Baba Sushi is in the process of negotiating a lease with Southbridge Sheet Metal Works. Unfortunately, it hasn't been completed yet, and I will provide a copy to Ms. Bubon to be provided to this board once it's complete. But in the event, for some reason, that agreement isn't entered into, or for some reason, if it were to be terminated in the next year, I think it would be best to have the flexibility for the client to put a lot-full sign in front of the parking lot and restrict the use of the property. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have regarding the request.
Very good. Russell, you have any questions?
Do you have some kind of agreement for, in a couple of weeks?
I don't...
The only reason I'm asking is that's the next flea market.
Yeah, no, no. So right now, there is an understanding, and they're using the property whenever they need to use the property, which at this time it's...
The official document isn't completed yet.
The document hasn't been complete, but there's an understanding, and the property owner allows for him to park there, so it's not that there's any unauthorized parking at the property. But there's other attorneys in our office, and one of the other attorneys is, was asked to look at that lease, and I'm, I'll probably get roped into that and looking at that lease as well, but I don't know the specific timeframes, so I can't say when it will be available, but I will be sure to follow up and keep after it.
Very good. Jim?
No questions.
Heather?
I like your, I just want to make a comment. I think the parking lots full sign is good. It'll avoid, you know, people pulling in and pulling back out. I think that was a great idea. I'm wondering, though, do we need to have that approval, that agreement before we approve this, or can we approve it without that?
Well, so the request itself is that the agreement isn't required.
Okay.
So what I'm requesting is that the peak hours, which is not the Brimfield time, which I'm sure all of you living in Sturbridge you know very well, that traffic's a little bit different during Brimfield weeks, three times a year versus the rest of the year, and that the peak hours, as they usually are aside from Brimfield, that there isn't a need for that parking agreement.
Oh, okay, all right. No, I'm all set, thank you.
Great.
All set, thank you.
Mike?
All set.
Okay, great. Okay, so Gene has a recommendation here that she sees, she has no concerns with the request for a determination from the board that Baba Sushi has demonstrated that the parking on-site is sufficient to accommodate the peak parking demands, and that a lease Okay, so Jean has a recommendation here that she sees, she has no concerns with the request for a determination from the board that Baba Sushi has demonstrated that the parking on-site is sufficient to accommodate the peak parking demands, and that a lease agreement to fill the gap of the Cuneli Realty Trust is not necessary. So if I could have a motion to make that determination?
So moved.
Okay, Heather, second?
Second.
Sue? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? I guess we're all set then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, the next item on the agenda is that we have the quarterly report from Pilot Travel Center. Anyone had a chance to look at that? Any? Oh, here it is. Okay, on June 11th, they conducted a quarterly inspection. They inspected the facility for cleanliness and noted the overall condition was clean with no noticeable trash. The upper parking area was noticeably cleaner. Well, pretty concise report.
Heather, you go by there a lot, have you noticed any particular problems?
No, not, not like we do in the wintertime. There's still parking on the road, but for days at a time, there was one.
Well, the same thing up where the mobile station is. Someday, it's gonna come to a head, but it's not as if they're not trying to do the job.
No, it, it does look better, it does. The problem is kind of moving up the line to the mobile station and where they're, you know, what you pointed out, Russ, was how many more trucks are parking up there, which seems to have doubled. They're leaving one end of the, moving up, up the line, so maybe that's why it looks better at Pilot.
I sometimes go by there.
I don't know.
I see that about eight in the morning and see the five or six trucks at the mobile station.
Right, right.
Those new owners will have to look at that.
Right, exactly. Well, the new owners, I think, will, you know, be kind of surprised when they see that, that's a good point. No, I, I haven't noticed any, any problems lately.
Very good. Any other questions or comments on the report? Okay, great. Okay, the town planner update has that the next meeting is July 17, and one of the items that'll be on there will be the Pine Lake RV Resort Site Plan. And the meeting after that would be August 14th, a meeting, so those would be the next two meetings that we have. Any old business?
Question about the Pine Lake.
Yes.
Is that considered a new site approval or an approval or an A and R?
Well, I, I don't think they're asking really for an A and R, I think they're...
No, it's a, they've applied for the site plan review.
Yeah, they are making, have you been over to visit yet, or?
No, I didn't get to go there first.
Because we had that first tour, and they have some, you know, changes, you know, some of the buildings will be replaced in close locations, but some will be other locations. They're talking about moving different roads around, and so I would say it's definitely a new site plan review.
Okay. Charlie, I was... I just didn't get a, for sure, answer to that reading this.
Yeah.
I was just, I was just looking at my calendar, July 10th at 5 o'clock is the next walk-through, so if anybody didn't make it...
Oh, good.
It's Tuesday night, I believe.
Very good. Any other old business? Any new business? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Very good.
Good job, Charlie.
Thank you.
Good job, Chairman.